Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the notice hereby given of the regular meeting of the Laguna Madre Water District Board of Directors to be held at 105 Port Road, Port Isabel, Texas, on the 22nd day of January 2020 at the hour 5:30 PM for consideration of the business of the agenda below. This notice is posted at the district on January 16, 2020, at 2:00 PM and according to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551-041-551-050, not less than 72 hours prior to the time of this set meeting. We do have the presence of a quorum. This is a continuation from our workshop meeting. Absent for this meeting, we have Jason Starkey notified us in advance that he has some other agenda going on tonight. If I may please, we've already done the pledge of allegiance, and if I may please ask anyone to the invitation, the audience, the public comments, the staff board, anyone have anything at this time? Like to discuss, share openly? Yes? Welcome, please state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Alicia Baldovinos from Grant Access. I just wanted to follow up, there's a press release on your desk that we put out today just for information, trying to start the conversation and give people, the public information on the presentations was our major concern and priority for this advertisement. But we will have others, we will be getting together a timeline of different, not advertisements, but just articles informational about the different projects and releasing those on social media as well as on the press and everything that I sent to the press, I also sent to the island and to Coastal Current and whatever media outlet I can find.
Excellent.
So I know it's a little bit lengthy, it was just important to kind of touch base on the low taxes and some of the projects that we're, we've done.
Thank you.
Thank you kindly.
Thank you.
Staff, board, audience, anyone like to share anything before we move along? Thank you. Moving along to item four, consider to discuss for possible approval, the minutes of the regular meeting on January 8, 2020. Does everyone have a chance to review them? Comments, questions? Motion made to accept by Mr. Houston?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Lallone, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Any opposed?
Alvalos abstains.
For the record, Mr. Alvalos abstains. All those are in favor? Motion does carry. Thank you. Moving along to item five, general managers' report.
I did provide a schedule for the bond committee. You see it on the next page right after five there, that we've scheduled for the bond committees and staff. First of all, staff is going to do the presentations and then the bond committee will be following us to at least see our presentations. We covered Long Island Village this morning at 9:00 AM and it turned out to be great. I think the more presentations that we do are going to get better, you know, we'll feel more confident. And the next one is this coming Friday at 8:30 at Port Isabel Chamber of Commerce. And you can see the rest down, January 28th, February 7th, February 11th, February 18th. We're all, we're all going to be tied up with these schedules. We're trying to make sure that we get the word across. So that's what I wanted to bring up to the board, the schedules. We provided the schedules to the bond committee also. And then, any questions on that one?
I don't have any.
No questions? Okay, we can move to the next item. It's the rescheduled of the regular board meeting of February the 12th. You all recall that we had made changes at the last board meeting to move it to the 5th of February. So the next, just a reminder that the next regular meeting is going to be on the 5th of February and then the, there's going to be the workshop at 4:30 and then the regular board meeting at 5:30. There it will be all.
Thank you, Carlos. Moving along to item six, consider to discuss for possible approval, the bids received on the following properties struck off, the Cameron County, Fort itself and other existing taxing jurisdictions from a tax reset conducted on November 5, 2019.
Yes, we have Ariana Kurial from Line Barter Attorneys &amp; Law.
Yes, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ariana Kurial. I'm one of the attorneys at the Line Barter office here in Brownsville. I'm here for that item number six. It's the consideration and discussion for possible approval for the bid that we received that includes your jurisdiction, Laguna Madre Water District. So this property is, as a legal description, I'll just say lot sevens, it's a lengthy description. This property includes entities such as Cameron County, Point Isipul Independent School District, as well as Laguna Madre Water District and the town of Laguna Vista. We took a judgment back in April 17th of 2018, so it's been a while. We sold it back in, well, we tried selling it in July the 3rd of 2018, but unfortunately it didn't sell. We tried reselling it in November 2018, but it again did not sell. We attempted once again in November of 2019, so just recently, and there was an interested buyer in purchasing this property. The buyer, if you have any interest in the buyer, it's Luna RGV Development and they made a bid, amount bid of $8,900. So the amount of judgment that we took back in 2018 was for a total amount of $21,305.99. The amount of bid again that he provided or that he bid and was the highest bidder was $8,900. The appraised value for this property is $20,625. The value at that judgment was still $20,000, so it hasn't decreased or it hasn't increased. The years that were included in the judgment, it's a lot of years, it's 1995 to 2017. The amount of the judgment that was, that Laguna Madre Water District should have received or should receive is $1,254.43. However, if we do approve the amount of bid of this buyer, which is $8,900, Laguna Madre Water District would receive $420, since it's not the, it's at a resale, it's not at the actual sale back in July the 3rd of 2018, so it's a lower bid. So that's why we're here for consideration and approval of this bid. Again, it would be $420.12. The town of Laguna Vista received $910 and they have approved it. We still need to go before Point Isipul Independent School District as well as the county.
So move. Second. Motion made by Mr. Houston, seconded by Mr. Alvalos. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Moving along to item seven, consider to discuss for possible approval, the resolution appealing the bids to receive, bids received on the tax reset conducted on November 5, 2019 for the property mentioned above. So move. Motion made by Mr. Houston?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Alvalos. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you. Consider and discuss for possible approval, board travel to attend Texas Water 2020 Conference from March 31st through April 3rd, 2020 in Fort Worth, Texas. So move. Motion made by Mr. Houston?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Alvalos. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Quick question, can you go to a part of it if you can't go to all of it?
Sure.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Parts for people who don't practice this.
Part of it's good.
Yes.
We recommend that you see everything, but if you can, you can.
Well, thank you. You can.
And whoever decides to travel to that one, let me know.
Yes.
Or call Daisy and we'll get you registered.
When do you have to know, Daisy?
March 31st through April 3rd.
No, he's like, when do you have to know?
Oh. You have.
Okay. Can we, we had approval for, by Mr. Houston, taken by Mr. Alvalos. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll work out those details later. Item nine, director of operations' report.
Mr. Chairman, board, members of the board, I do want to go over the monthly reports that I have compared in January, I mean December of 2018 with December of 2019. Before I do that, I'd like to pass. These papers I just passed out deal with the other two items I'm going to be reporting on. But as far as the monthly reports and the service calls and callouts, there was a decrease in December of 2019 from the previous year, December of 2018. December 2018 was 306 service calls with, and callouts were in December of 2019, there were a total of 227. One of the biggest difference was on the changed meters and that had to do a lot with when we were just starting with the meter project. So we started changing a lot of the meters because of the problems that we were having. And that's pretty much what happened in November of last year, as I reported, the last month. In the distribution side, or I'm sorry, the collection side, the callouts, service calls did increase from 46 in 2018 to 65 in 2019. And again, this is primarily based on the preventive maintenance, since we're doing a lot more preventive maintenance since we got the new truck, we're going in there and flushing out some of these lines that we normally, that normally get clogged up, so we try to get that before it happens. I don't know if anybody has any questions on the rest of it, the items? If not, I'll go into the other report as far as the meter count. The project, pretty much as far as exchanging meters, the changing out of the meters is complete as of yesterday. That was the reason that I waited to pass this report out. This is the daily installs on the meters. And you'll see on there where we installed the 100, actually with 103 meters, more than than what we contracted, but a lot of that has to do with growth. New tabs that came in, so we went and installed meters. Also, on some cases, we went out and changed some of these meters because we were having complaints from customers that they, they just didn't feel right as far as that the meter was charging it too much, there's too much water going through the.
We're creating radio activity.
Yes. That is true.
How many do you think you've changed out, new meter for new meter?
I would be guessing, do you have an estimate on that?
More or less?
About five to seven.
I'd probably say about 10 or so.
And after they've been changed out, are the customers satisfied then?
Well.
It's a new, another new meter? Same activity? It's the same thing.
Yes.
But they're, they're finally convinced that.
Well, what we did in most cases is before we did the change out, we tested that meter and told the customer that the meter was testing okay. And so we went ahead and changed it up just for their benefit and that pretty much satisfied them, I guess they.
So can you put that meter back in stock to use for future?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we're reusing that meter. The other report that I had, that was the installation of the poles and what I handed out was some pictures. That first picture you see there is the cranes and, but primarily the, what I wanted to show you was the platform that is being used. Right under that platform, in between the two middle cones, you'll see some little blue flags. That's where our water line, water line is. So as you can see, there's a gap there, they kind of build the bridge so that the equipment that they're using, which is pretty heavy, would not put any weight on our water lines. So they're doing, they're taking all the precautions they can to make sure that they don't put any weight on it.
That added a lot of expense to their project cost, I'm sure.
Oh, yes. Yeah. The other thing they're also doing is that they're going in and putting a, like a monitor on our lines, right?
How does that work?
Well, they're, they're monitoring the vibration that they're using and you can see, on the next picture, you'll see the, the caisson that they're putting in there, which is about 70 feet tall approximately. Can you go up a little bit more in that? And you can kind of get the, an idea on that? No, bring it down, I'm sorry. There's a man standing there and you can kind of get an idea of how deep that's going.
And that's going into the ground?
Yes, sir.
That's just the part going to hold it down? That's not including the vertical ground up east?
No, that's just the caisson going into the ground.
Wow.
And so when they're putting that in there, next picture, you can see the vibration machine, this is what they're using to put the caisson in to knock it down. So they're monitoring the vibration on that and what the pipe, what our water line is receiving. And so based on what Joel was told is that they're pretty much going in about an inch per second, so they're, they're monitoring to kind of help us there, although it didn't help us on, when they got to Laguna Vista, but I'll get that, into that in a minute. So once they do that, on the following picture, you'll see where that caisson has really gone into the ground almost completely.
So let me ask you, I'm sorry to interrupt you. What happens, I guess, if there is a, you know, comes undone or the ground settles or changes in three years? Are they held accountable, responsible? That's our fix or, I mean, is there repercussions that go against the vibration causing future damage or?
On our water line?
On our water line? Yeah. Did I explain that or asked that promptly?
Yeah.
Yeah, they might not be hearing it now, but in three years, something could break and it could be directly caused by this, it's just.
I mean, that's a lot, that's a lot of vibration, I mean, because those poles are probably every 500 feet apart or so, I guess? I mean, I don't know, just as.
Less than.
Less, 300?
200.
200? That's a lot of vibration going down on that, following your whole water line, I guess, just thinking out loud or asking.
And, and that's a good point. We thought about that as well. As a matter of fact, Joel and I have talked about it. I don't know if.
Have you ever talked to them about that?
I can. And I can talk to them tomorrow?
Just curious, I mean, you know, it's.
The problem's going to be is when they come to Port Isabel and you're right next to a water line.
Actually, when they get into Laguna Heights.
Yeah. Right now, they got 20, maybe 30 feet.
It's about 15, 12 to 15.
But there's.
And it's getting closer.
There's a spread now.
And well, it's getting closer as they get to Laguna Heights.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We are, I went to a meeting at City Hall here at Port Isabel and I asked that question. I asked them who was responsible for paying and they said that if they caused the problem that they would pay for it. Part of the, the reason they feel a little bit comfortable with the process is because, based on what they told me, is that our, a lot of our infrastructure where it sits, where it's in the ground, the ground here is kind of not, it's not solid, like, it's very soft. And so it's able to absorb some of that vibration and so they're really relying on that factor. But we did talk about it and I asked them who would be responsible and they said that they would if that's something that they caused. Because that's the purpose of having the meter or checking the vibration, measuring that and not to exceed a certain point. And they know what that threshold is and once they get past that, then they become liable if that's what happens.
Well, good, because we'll probably be filling them a little bit.
Yeah. And most of their concern, most of their concern was in the, in the connections, not so much the pipe itself, but in the connections.
Because you're vibrating so much that it has to have an impact.
Yeah. Now, I, that's why I asked the question, because I know it's going to happen.
If I could chime in just a little bit, with things like this where they cause the damage and then years down the line find the damage, normally there's a statute of limitations, but for something like this, it's when you would have reasonably discovered the damages, is when the statute of limitations begins to run. So if they're negligent, normally that's two-year statute of limitations, but if you recognize it. But in construction like this, you have to be really careful. If you notice any little type of, anything wrong with it, even if you don't know for sure that it was caused by a, this project, if, I mean.
Well, that much pounding and vibration has got to cause issues on future.
Well, but what I'm saying is.
With pressure in those lines.
What you might, in the future, what happens is you've noticed damage, but you don't immediately connect it, but the statute runs when you notice the damages, not when you connect it to them and say like, oh, I bet you that was them. So we got to be really careful in the future if, I mean, you file suit, you know, as soon as you can if it's, if it's, you know, if, if, even if it's possible. So I would just caution that.
So the guy that says, so when did you notice it?
Right.
And they say, oh, yeah, 2020 and it's 2023 and.
Right. Because you didn't tie it to that, you didn't know it was that, but it doesn't matter. It's not when a reasonable person would have figured out that it was this project that caused it, it's when you saw any kind of damage. So if you see any kind of damage with these lines in the year, future, in the future, tell me right away, you know, and.
Just my comment.
Because we got to, we got to, I've seen that happen with water.
Does it make sense for us to have some oversight there?
I think, it sounds like everybody's doing everything right and you're doing the, they're measuring the vibrations. I'm not a technical guy. I'm just saying about the statute of limitations, that can be a trap because you don't connect. If you notice something fishy with your lines or something, you know, you got to remember that maybe it's time to.
Just to let you know, there has been some damage already.
Okay.
It's on the 10-inch water line there by the stripes that goes into Laguna Vista and there was, it turned out to be two of the pipe in the joint where it comes in. One of them had two cracks, the other pipe had one and then where the flange, where they meet together, the, that was also damaged.
What caused that? What caused that?
That was the vibration.
Right, that's my, that's my whole question.
And so they did dig it up for us, so all we did was just go in there and fix it up at this point. So we really didn't have any downtime as far as that's concerned. And that water line is old.
The oldest.
The oldest. That's 50, 60, 70 years old as far as.
But it wouldn't have broke if there weren't vibrations either.
True.
More than likely it wouldn't have.
So we should have like a special file somewhere that really references just this project and keeps track of every.
Just remember years down the line, and if you have trouble with these waters.
Yeah, we don't want to like be calling you, you're on vacation on the beach, retired and like, hey, remember what happened? And you're like, oh, yeah, it's probably in that folder somewhere, like, let's have it written down so we have it.
So my, my question is, do we have, do we have to shadow their work or do we need to go alone?
That's up to y'all's technical.
They have, we have to have somebody there watching the project, so all I can do is watch. Yeah.
And we notice right away when the water starts seeping up and it stays standing there, it just starts growing, then it's pretty much of an indication that there was a water line break there.
We should just make sure there's a report on everyone, a written report.
Yes, and that's being handled by.
Well, we can do again, we can request a vibration report at each install.
That's what I would recommend.
And they'll let us know if it exceeded the level, the threshold. And at that time, those issues in the future will, the report will show that it exceeded the threshold.
Have you found that sometimes it does exceed, exceed the threshold?
It depends on the guy, the lead guy doing the caisson that's sitting there.
And the ground.
Yes, on the ground. There's a guy looking at the monitor and it's one second, one inch per second, right? Going down. If it exceeds that, you pull down a red flag and shows it to the guy.
So sometimes it does happen?
Yes, it does happen.
But the ground could be harder in that spot.
Sure. The guy doing the lead chooses to, okay, I, I, I see you, but I'm going to continue. So once it hits two seconds, he shows it again. Usually that time he stops. So all that is recorded and I've got a complete report that I submitted that they gave.
That's great.
So I can request all of them.
Yeah.
They'll give it to us. And then all the caissons and the photo are numbered, so we'll know which one corresponds to which one.
What's the reason for all the hydro excavation you're doing?
Actually, that's how they're locating the water lines and installing those monitors to record the vibration. That's how they're able to get to our line. We go out there, the guys go out there physically finding, probe it, and they'll tell us right here, they'll soft dig it, excavate it and put the monitors on when they're on that particular location.
So in this picture.
It sounded to me like they're really trying to do the best they can to avoid any problems.
No, I'm sure they are. We're going, yeah, I can just see the future of those casings and elbow, you know, things getting.
Having some ground movement there.
Having some movement, that's 70 feet down.
Well, this picture shows you where that casing has already gone down. It's pretty much in the ground. As you can see in the middle, there's that original telephone pole that was cut and they left that stub there and that's where they put the casing on.
Joel, do you know if they're filling up those cages with cement or what they're doing?
Not done more, they're not. They're not putting any, we're not. Because the dirt coming down, a foot below that, that flange. Yeah, they keep holding down.
So once that casing gets past the original pole, then it's all.
Amazing. There's bolts holding that.
Same.
Probably the same dirt.
Yeah.
And bolts all together.
Yeah, there's dirt inside, even a little foot, put it over that pole, they just put it naked for whatever reason, there's dirt up until eight inches, a foot off that flange. Or where we see the line of dirt, that's it, the pole's not dirt, that's where the line, the dirt is at. It's not hollow, it's important.
You got to imagine the stress of the poles.
And the next picture, you see where the, the telephone pole or the pole that's going to be visible is vaulted down to the casing. And then the last picture, you see the pole itself as, as they finished installing it.
Are they sure?
That concludes my report.
Move along to item 10, district engineers' report, Charles?
Right. Yeah, I mean, this one's pretty brief. It's basically about our Monday bond planning committee meeting. Noel Valdez, our friend counsel, had come down and gave a good presentation to the committee. I mean, mainly it's, it's just the key issue being the, the use of district resources being used like to, to advocate for, for the bond election. So I mean, pretty much when somebody's on their own time, their own dollar, their own expense, I mean, they can tell people to vote for this bond election as much as they want, but I mean, if, if you're at the point of, you know, running 50 copies here at the office, that's when, you know, you're at risk of getting charged with an ethics violation because you're using those resources out of the district. So I mean, that's basically the kind of Noel's presentation in a nutshell as far as, you know, what we would be, what we have to be careful about once we call the spot election and, you know, keep everything on the up note.
He finally agreed that whether it be copies or the video, all these things are basically informational. It's, and it's until you produce something that's advocating and, and having the district pay for that, that's a problem, correct?
I think that's correct.
Yes.
I would defer to bound, bond counsel.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, the council was here the other day for the bond council.
So you could take one of our flyers and if you go and make copies on your own dime and, and you hand those out and you tell people that would be acceptable, but if you come and use our copy machine and make those copies and you go out to advocate.
No, that's.
No, that's not necessarily correct, because if it's, if it's an informational circular, then it's not advocating, just like this.
The, the paper that, that copy was made on is, belongs to the district.
Well, I mean, the video, the video the district spent money on, but he finally agreed that the video doesn't advocate, it's informational, so it's okay to be used.
I'll refer the, your question to him.
But I, I think I understand your point, as long as it's not saying, you know, in support of or against, that it's just informational, so if it's just informational, it's okay.
When we reproduce that, the, the chart over there, that's informational, that's not advocating.
Right.
Doesn't say vote for.
Right. It's like, like, say the video, it's the content of the video, we're not having slogans in there, we're not saying, you know, vote yes for this, or, you know, it's just conveying what, what the information is.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that concludes the report.
Thank you, Charles. Item 11, consider and discuss for possible approval of replant of Lot 2, Rowel Forest subdivision, including the relocation of utility easement and existing water line gravity, sewer, and forced name. This item has been requested to be postponed to the next meeting, table, to the next meeting? Yes.
Motion to table.
Table by Dr. Lallan, and seconded by Mr. Avalos, for all those in favor. They are?
Aye.
Item is table, thank you. Moving on to item 12, consider and discuss for possible approval of the financial reports for October 2019. Motion, a motion to approve by Mr. Houston.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Lallan, for all those in favor. They are?
Opposed?
None? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item 13, consider and discuss for possible approval of the financial reports for November 2019. Still don't have a chance to review them, questions, comments?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion for approval by Dr. Lallan, seconded by Mr. Houston, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item 14, consider and discuss for possible approval of the quarterly investment report for the quarter ended December 31st, 2019. Still don't have a chance to review, questions or comments?
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Avalos, seconded by Mr. Houston, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Any opposed?
None?
Motion carries. Thank you. Consider and review expenditures from January 1st, 2020 through January 15th, 2020. Questions or comments about any one in particular, otherwise need to acknowledge these expenditures? Acknowledged, made by Mr. Houston.
Okay.
Seconded by Mr. Avalos, are all those in acknowledgement?
Yes.
They are? None are opposed or questioned? Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to item 16, consider, excuse me, executive session permitted by the Open Meetings Act, VTC, a Government Code, Section 551, 001, Ed. Segments under Section 551, 071, Consultation with Attorney, Item A, update on the land swap between city of Fort Isabel and Laguna Madre Water District at Little League Maintenance Yard, Item B, update on legal matters concerning ratepayers' appeal of the raw water. May please move on to executive motion at 6:05 PM. Motion made by Mr. Houston, seconded by Dr. Lallan, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? We're in executive session. Would we like to resume the meeting, or would we like to take a recess?
Proceed.
Need a motion to adjourn executive session at 6:23 PM.
So move.
Motion made by Mr. Avalos, seconded by Mr. Houston, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? We're out of executive session. Item A, update on land swap between the city of Fort Isabel and Laguna Madre Water District at Little League Maintenance Yard, proceed as directed, no action required. Item B, update on legal matters concerning ratepayers' appeal of the raw water rate, no action. Need a meeting to, need a motion to adjourn the meeting at 6:24 PM.
So move.
Motion made by Mr. Avalos, seconded by Mr. Houston, are all those in favor? The meeting is adjourned at 6:24 PM.